Board meeting for the City of New Brunswick from May 1st, 2017. We're all ready to go, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome back, everybody. Start with roll call.
Peter Checo. Claire Barber.
Here.
Chris Stellatello. John Exalino.
Here.
Manuel Fasenada.
Here.
Harley Newbauer. Suzanne Ludbrook. Dayton Henry.
Here.
Jeff Fromm.
Public access, open public meetings.
Please be advised that the notice department said open public meetings at. If you are satisfied with the handling of this, it is sufficient notice of time, place, condo, walk-up meeting to the planning board of the City of New Brunswick, and if filed with the city clerk, placed on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, 78 Bayard Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and transmitted to official newspapers of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home Insurance Union and Star Company.
Thank you. Let's put stands to smoke a glass.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic of forty seconds, one edition under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as far off.
Do you have the minutes of the board's April 10th, 2017?
Chairman of the board, you see copies of the minutes of the April 10th meeting. If you have any changes, a motion to approve, please order.
Motion to approve.
A second.
On favor.
Aye.
Puts. Misses pass.
Moving on to some new business, we have one application. This is Cultural Center redevelopment, Associate Urban Renewal LLC, New Brunswick Cultural Center, AP, AP, 2017, Article 1, Site Plan Subdivision Application Pursuant to the Standard Set for the Cultural Center Redevelopment Plan for Construction of Mixed-Use Development Consisting of Theaters, Office Space, Residential Minutes, Parking Facilities Located in Nine Livingston Avenue, Block 12, Blocks 1301, 13.01, 15.01, 23.01, Zorn District, Site 4.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso, appearing on behalf of all the interested parties in this really exciting project. As the board will recall from April 10th, and I'll just for the record, indicate that the application is for preliminary and final site plan and minor subdivision approval to construct a 22-story mixed-use building consisting of a two-level performing arts center containing two theaters, theater offices, lobby public spaces, and rehearsal spaces, two levels of additional office and rehearsal spaces, and an 18-story residential tower consisting of 207 residential apartment units. The project will also include a 7-story parking garage containing 344 parking spaces, together with valley, studio, rehearsal space. And as indicated, Mr. Chairman, this project is pursuant to the Cultural Center Redevelopment Plan and fully conforms with that plan. Again, for the record, and I know all the members of the board that are here this evening were here on April the 10th, and if you recall, at that time, the same application, which has not changed, was approved unanimously by the board. However, it was identified after the meeting that one of the board members who voted on the application had a conflict. Now, that board member is not here this evening, and it was determined through councilor and through discussion that it was necessary for us to proceed once again with the application. And we do appreciate the fact that the board was able to grant us a special meeting so that we could move this forward. I would indicate, for the record, the application, since it was approved, has not changed. The plans have not changed, but here we are, just doin' doo-wop. Unless there's questions for me, but that is no review. My intent is to call the same witnesses we had here previously. I suspect your testimony will be similar than what you heard previously, but again, we wish to at least refresh memory. So at this time, unless there's questions, I have a call, Mr. Chris Palladino for testimony.
Raise your right hands, state your names by your last name, please.
Christopher Palladino, P.A., L.A., D.I.L.
And do you swear the oath of allegiance matter?
Yes. Actually, I'd say from initially that anything that I said last time, particularly when I was more elegant, I hope you consider that, and nothing I say today contradicts what I said then. So I didn't bring my notes from last time. While I may be prone to hyperbole from time to time, I could contend that this is the most significant redevelopment project in the history of New Brunswick, and is certainly one of the broadest public-private partnerships in the history of New Jersey. While only $160 million, and we've got to the point in New Brunswick where $160 million isn't the largest thing that we've done, this project includes participation as partners in the City of New Brunswick, the County of Middlesex, the Parking Authority, the City of, I said, the County, the City of New Brunswick, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. It includes all of our resident companies, who would be Crossroads Theater Company, George Street Playhouse, the American Repertory Ballet, Rutgers University, the New Brunswick Cultural Center is a major partner. And it includes financing that comes from the private sector directly and grants from the public sector, but also the federal government through Newmarket Tax Credits and through the state through herb credits that were part of special legislation that Governor Christie signed and had its funds about the Senate President, Senator Bob Smith. It's a complicated transaction, but that's one of the reasons, I think, it's kind of the elegance of it. In short, what this project will let us do is have more cultural performances on more nights through a longer part of the year than we're currently able to do. While we're taking down two theaters and only replacing it with two theaters, we are replacing them with probably two of the most technologically advanced theaters that will be built in the state of New Jersey. And Mr. Manfredi will kind of articulate this, but the fact that we're building trap and wing space and pit and fly space will allow us to, on more nights, not have the downtime that we currently have. Today, George Street Playhouse rehearses a play on that stage, they do their four weeks of performances, then they take it down and they start their next performance. Here, it's quite possible that Rutgers might do an opera on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and on Sunday, George Street will start its season because of the technology that allows you to, you know, take scenery and fly up 80 feet and do it. But the most important thing that we're doing is that we're building an extraordinary amount of rehearsal space. So again, the ballet, Crossroads, George Street, Rutgers can be rehearsing in other parts of the building and not using valuable space. But probably more importantly is that it's going to allow us to be far more inclusive and allow various, not just New Brunswick community-based cultural groups that might come from the various community groups or churches or those things to use those rehearsal spaces and performance spaces. But we're have the advantage, added advantage, that the County of Middlesex is going to really kind of focus its cultural and heritage activity and all that it brings to this facility. And the fact that it's within easy walking distance of many parts of our community, the fact that being in New Brunswick and on public transportation is going to allow us to really outreach to other parts of the county and allow much broader participation and really kind of make the point again and again that New Brunswick really is the kind of the focal point for cultural and heritage activity, not only in Middlesex County, but in the region. So I'll just kind of put Mr. Manfredi. Go. Many good things I said last time, just remember that.
Just a point of clarification, for the professionals, since they've all been sworn in, we accepted their credentials.
Yes.
They just need to be sworn in. And just so we're clear, so the board members are clear also, this is a rehearing based on the request of the board. The applicant is not the reason, normally when a rehearing is done, it's because the applicant may have testified to something that the board subsequently determined was not accurate. For instance, they said that we're going to build a 40-story tower and they end up building, their plans are for 47-story tower. So you can ask them to come back before the board. In this case, this is truly an applicant that is not at fault for the request for rehearing, but notwithstanding that, did notice the public. I understand that the applicant's witnesses will provide summary testimony. If the board members do not have a recollection as to prior testimony, certainly you can ask the questions that you may have, but really, the purpose of the rehearing is also not only to refresh the board's memory, but to allow the public to ask any questions that they may have regarding this application. If there's any new testimony that's provided, certainly that would be relevant as well. And Mr. Kelso's been kind enough to tell me that if there is anything new that's being provided, he will point that out if I don't pick it up.
Chair, can I ask you a question? The record that was created at the April 10th hearing, is that still a valid record for purposes should anything need to be revisited either today or in the future for whatever reason?
Mr. Kelso will most likely make a motion to incorporate the testimony at the end of this hearing, and the board can consider that testimony as well. What it cannot consider, however, is any questions that may have been asked by a board member who has since recused himself. Thank you.
I think Mr. Manfredi should be sworn in.
Raise your right hands, state your names by your last name, please.
David Manfredi, M.A.N.F.R.E.D.I.
And do you swear the oath of allegiance matter?
I do.
Mr. Manfredi, again, you obviously testified previously. You are an architect of the state of New Jersey, and you are responsible for the development of these plans.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't you just give us a brief overview of the plans? I know we have all our exhibits here that were marked previously, so feel free to refer to them.
I will do that, and I'll make the same statement that Mr. Palladino made. My intent is to repeat what I said last time. If I fail to say anything that's not deliberate, and everything, my testimony will be consistent with my testimony a month ago. I'll start with our site plan, and you'll remember that the site spans from Livingston to Bayard, includes that configuration with the theater fronts and address on Livingston. And I'll give you a little bit more on that ground floor with a blown-up view, but you can see that there is front door for the two theaters Mr. Palladino mentioned, and front door for the residential lobby as well. The two theaters, the 400--
I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Patterson suggests we should accept--
Have you said to accept his credentials?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. I assume that we had accepted the credentials of the same witnesses unless, of course, they're--
We're saying we don't have to make an actual statement on the record. We're taking it from the last hearing. We're putting it on the record now.
That's correct.
We can put it on the record now?
We can put on the record now that you're accepting the credentials of the prior witnesses who were previously accepted as experts in their field.
I wish, sorry.
Two theaters, 462-seat full-fly loft theater with low seating as well as balcony seating, and a second theater, which is a 252-seat theater. They both share the same lobby space, concession, food service space, and the kind of gallery space that connects the two. Mentioned this, there's also a lobby for the residential above that accesses the 207 units of housing that Mr. Palladino mentioned. On the Bayard Street part of the site is parking structure. The parking structure, seven levels of parking, 344 spaces, but also a connector through that connects Bayard to Livingston and allows for connection for people parking in this parking garage to get direct access out to Livingston to get directly into the residential or to come around onto the street and get access into the theater space. A bigger view of that ground floor space and those two theaters. Livingston at the bottom of the sheet, we've cut off the parking garage in this case. You can see front doors for the theater lobby on the ground floor on Livingston accessing to the 462-seat full-fly loft theater, and then this gallery space that connects to theater number two, which is the 252-seat theater. All of this represents residential lobby, front door off the street, direct access for parking, and then into the elevator core and up to the fifth floor and above, the residential floors of the, I don't think-- You can see in the theater lobby stairs, it goes up to a second floor, which accesses the mezzanine above. There is, I could go through in greater detail, I'll simply mention accessible, handicapped accessible seating both on the street level floor as well as on the balcony floor of both theaters.
And for the record, you was referencing Exhibit A1.
This is Exhibit A2, which is a view standing from, just walking out from the Hellrich Hotel, and you're looking across the square to the full building, which is theater on the ground, two floors, and then the two levels of office and rehearsal space. There's an amenity floor for the residences that you can see as kind of a seam in the building between the base of the building and the tower, and then the full 22 floors, including the residential floors above. And as I mentioned last time, our design of the building intends to communicate the full significance of this building as an important civic building in the city of New Brunswick, that we want the ground floor of the building to be very transparent, to communicate the activity, not only of the performances of the theater, but the rehearsals of the theater as well, through all of this, all of the different kinds of arts that it will promote in the city, including theater, music, ballet. The variety and diversity of activity here can really be quite an incredible cultural benefit for the entire city. And our goal is make this building a billboard for the arts in the city of New Brunswick, really give the city, give the building a sense of important civic presence in the city, address the square, and have an important address in the heart of the city. And then the residential floors above, you can see the building has a good deal of class. It'll have, the residential units will have a great deal of daylight, corner units with corner windows, and obviously, at 22 stories, will have some tremendous views. Exhibit A3, I'll take this down. Exhibit A3 is a view looking up Liberty Street, again, to the theater at the base of the building, what I'm calling the seam, which is the amenity floor for the residences, and then the residential floors above. And you can see that same size of window and penetration wrapping all the way around the building. We think these are going to be wonderful residences that kind of at the heart of the city and with some of the very best views that are available. But it's really the building's presence at the street and in the heart of this part of the city as an important civic presence. I will go to Exhibit A4. Something falls down. Exhibit A4 is simply a close-up look, again, looking, the Hellrich is on your left, and looking across the square. You can see the ground floor, this is the entrance to the theater as well as the entrance to the residences. Second floor is balcony to the theater, but also rehearsal spaces and very deliberately transparent, so that even when there's not a performance, even during the day, there's activity in this building, the presence of the arts in the city is communicated through the design of the building. A kind of canopy that announces its important presence, and then two levels of additional rehearsal space and office space that supports all the activities in the two theaters, and then the residential floors above. And then finally, onto the other side of the building, onto the Bayard Street elevation, our parking structure. You can see City Hall beyond the bank building. Our parking structure on the ground floor will actually have rehearsal space, additional rehearsal space, which will activate the street if that rehearsal space will be glazed, so that when it is in use, will engage pedestrians, signage. And then the building, the parking structure itself, you can see is clad in this kind of frame of precast panels with impregnated color that is consistent with the brick of Bayard Street. You can see the proposal to add banners for all of the different companies that will occupy the theaters, give them presence on this street as well as on Livingston. And then the last exhibit is Exhibit A6, which is an interior rendering of one of the theaters. This is actually Theater 2, and we simply provide this to give you a sense of what these theaters will look like, but also a sense of the quality of the spaces, their importance in the city, their importance to the life of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi. I have no further questions. This time I will call Christopher Roach for testimony.
Can you raise your right hands, state your names by your last name, please?
It's Christian Roach.
So before we get started with the site plan, I want to briefly go over the subdivision that we talked about last time, and to Tom's point, similar to the other professionals. It's my intention, everything I said last time still holds true, and just kind of give a brief summary of what we discussed a few weeks back. So under the existing lot configuration, the entire redevelopment area is 1.9 acres. It's currently divided into three lots. There's Block 12, Block 2301, which is 0.78 acres, that houses Crossroads Theater and the George Street Playhouse. There's Block 12, Block 1501, that's 0.38 acres, that's the Cultural Center parking lot. And then there's Block 12, Block 1301, which is 0.72 acres, and that's the TD Bank site. What we're proposing as part of our subdivision is we're taking the three lots down to two lots, the two new lots that we call proposed Block 12, Block 1502, that's 1.36 acres, and that will house the redevelopment project, and the remaining portion, proposed Block 12, Block 1303, that's serving 5.2 acres, that'll be the TD Bank site. Both of the new lots conform to requirements of the redevelopment plan as well as the underlying zone. What I'm putting up now is Exhibit A8, which is a rendered site plan. I'm not going to rehash any of the program, as Mr. Manfredi discussed, I'll briefly talk about some of the site circulation, the parking, landscape, day and stormwater, and utilities. The proposed parking garage on-site has 344 parking stalls in the structure. There's also plus or minus 38 additional stalls at the surface level. I say plus or minus because we're still working with TD Bank to finalize the layout. So in total, with the ground level and the parking structure, will approximately 382 parking stalls. Based on requirements of the redevelopment plan, we did a shared parking analysis, and the required number of stalls is 236, so we're proposing 150 plus or minus more stalls than was required. And based on conversation with the parking authority, we feel, based on this location, that that's the appropriate amount of stalls. Vehicles are going to access the parking garage from Bayard Street. There's a one-way orientation to the west, they'll be able to make a left into the parking garage before making a counterclockwise movement to get up to the seven stories. I think last time we did briefly talk about that we don't have any security gates, mechanical gates, as part of this garage. It's new technology that the parking authority is using, and it's all based on license plate detection. You can use NAF, there's various ways to fade tickets, but the good part about not having the security is you reduce the risk of any queues on Bayard Street, or especially leaving the garage after a theater performance. I think we've all gone through that experience. This really expels that process. We're proposing two loading docks as part of the application, and one is for the residential and office use, and that will be located in the central eastern portion of the site. We anticipate this to be SU40 vehicles, they'll be able to pull head-on into the garage, access to loading dock, and be able to back up and then pull head out, which is ideal for pedestrians, you never back up into that. For the larger theater performances, we have a shared loading dock note, not only for our two theater spaces, but also for the state theater. There will be WB67 trucks. We anticipate this movement happening around once a week throughout the course of the year. In order to get the trucks into the garage, they'll be making a recourse movement from Bayard Street, they'll come up the street, past the garage, and back their way in. When we do do this operation, it'll be during off-peak hours with a flagman, and you'd have to maximize the pedestrian safety in the area. The garage entrance width is approximately 30 feet, which is a little bit wider than a typical garage, but it works out well for us to minimize the issues with pedestrian conflicts by having that larger width opening. It's much more easier for vehicles exiting the garage to see pedestrians. Another vehicular improvement we're proposing is along Livingston Avenue. There's currently a drop-off in place in front of theaters, but one of the downsides of that drop-off is there's a curve island to the south, which kind of locks vehicles in, in the sense that if you could stack four vehicles there, the second through fourth vehicles can't go anywhere unless the first vehicle goes anywhere. So we're proposing a drop-off, which can accommodate six vehicles, and all six of those vehicles can get in and get out at their own schedule. From a landscaping perspective, we're generally proposing most of our streetscape along Livingston Avenue. We have three or four maple trees going in, and one thing that we agreed to put in after the meeting last time, we already installed a few street trees on Bayard Street that will be on the eastern portion of the site, just so we minimize any impacts on those truck turning movements. Lighting, we are proposing to maintain the existing standard city lighting fixtures on Bayard Street and on Livingston Avenue, they need the required lighting levels. The only thing we're adding is in between the residential and office space and the parking garage, we're going to have some wall-mounted fixtures here to ensure that we can meet the city lighting levels within the loading dock area. Stormwater management, we're not required to provide stormwater retention or water quality treatment, because the entire site is mostly impervious today. We're not increasing impervious by more than a quarter of an acre, so those requirements aren't triggered. However, we are proposing a new stormwater conveying system at the ground level of the garage that collects runoff not only from the surface lot, but under existing conditions today, there's an easement for some of the roof drainage state theater in the existing buildings to run through Bayard Street. We're just going to maintain that pattern with a new stormwater conveying system. Utility-wise, our major connections will all be within Livingston Avenue, the most powerful infrastructure is there, so our electric, gas, water, and sewer will be served on the southern portion of the building.
No further questions for Christian? Thanks. This time I call Mr. Daniel Disario.
Can you raise your right hand, state your names by your last name, please?
Certainly, Dan, last name is Disario, D.I.S.A.R.I.O.
And do you swear the oath of allegiance matter?
I do.
And again, Dan, you did testify the last year.
Yes, I did.
And has anything changed with regard to your testimony from the last hearing?
It has not.
Can you just give us a brief overview of the traffic analysis that you did?
Certainly. As the board recalls, and you heard earlier this evening, as well as the last hearing, essentially, you have two theaters, they're coming down. We're putting up two brand-new state-of-the-art theaters. From a traffic perspective, I would respectfully submit that's a wash. I anticipate any drastic changes in traffic generated by the theater operations. So essentially, what we're talking about in terms of any traffic changes to the area of the proposed office space as well as the residential. As I testified to previously, if you look at the office and the residential, during a weekday morning peak hour, we anticipate about additional 70 vehicles would come into the site. 50 vehicles would leave the site for a total two-way weekday morning peak hour, a trip generation of 120 trips. Certainly during the weekday evening peak hour, 55 trips would come in, 80 trips would leave, for a total two-way volume of 135 trips. With respect to any particular direction, that equates to a little more than one vehicle permitted during those peak hours, and I would respectfully submit to you that that type of traffic generation does not rise to the level of any significant traffic impact. I think if you go out and observe traffic operations in the immediate surrounding area today, and if you're inclined to approve this project and build, you wouldn't be able to perceive any noticeable changes in traffic operations. I would leave with one final note. You heard from Christian, Mr. Roach, along Bayard Street, right now, there are two curb cuts that serve this site as part of this proposal. We're consolidating those two curb cuts into one curb cut, one two-way driveway. From a motoring perspective, in terms of the motorists that are traveling down Bayard as well, and probably more importantly, the pedestrians that are walking up and down Bayard Street in front of the site, taking two curb cuts down to one is a good thing, reducing the number of conflict points, and certainly that will be a benefit of motorists as well as pedestrians.
And no further questions, Mr. Disario? If the board has none, that completes our testimony of our witnesses.
Thank you.
A couple of housekeeping might, I lose if I could. And I put this into record the last time, if you recall. But with regard to the subdivision associated with the TD Bank, and the representative from TD Bank to receive it, there are two points that we have agreed with TD Bank as part-- part of their participation in the subdivision and helping development of the site. The first is that the, and Christian referred to this a little bit earlier, but the finalization of the final layout and striping of the ground-level parking, which is going to be occupied by TD Bank, will be by agreement between TD Bank, the parking authority, and the City Planning Department. So that final striping will be based upon what everybody agrees should be the parking layout for the bank. And second of all, there is to be an ATM machine that's located in the parking garage entry lobby that will also contain signage, and that's also a condition that we've agreed to with regard to the TD Bank participation. Again, that was testified to previously, and that wasn't placed on the record. Finally, as referred to by Arden previously, I mean, this is an unusual circumstance that we're here this evening. I believe that our testimony, as David indicated specifically, has not changed from when we were here previously, so that I would ask, make a motion, if the board would see fit, to incorporate the record that was previously placed before the board, which, you know, took several hours last time, so there was an ample record of testimony that provided support for this for the previous report. And I don't think anything that you heard this evening is different, although it was a shorter version, but we would ask to have that record incorporated into the record of this hearing for purposes of the board's consideration. And with that, that's all I have.
Make a motion.
Pleasantly. Just one quick question. We are, do we have to do anything specific as far as utilizing the testimony from the previous?
It's part of the findings if the board members feel that the previous testimony was in fact one of the bases for their decision this evening, when the motion is made, that that be included with a motion. So there won't be a separate motion that's required at this point to incorporate that testimony.
Okay. But as a condition for a rule, we have to state for that motion that we want to incorporate the evidence, the evidence for the tentative.
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't think there were any questions from the party that had conflict, but any comments if any were to be considered that not?
I've looked through my notes, and there were no questions and no comments that were made at all by this member.
Very good. Thank you.
Is it ready for motion?
You get out.
It has to be opened up in the public.
Charlie, can you raise your right hand, state your names, spell your last name, please?
Charles Prattaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-M.
And you swear to the Lord?
Yes, I do. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board. It's an honor and a pleasure to speak with you tonight. I'm glad to see the do-over happening because ethics are important and, you know, kudos to the folks who made the decision to do the right thing. I guess right off the bat, I want to know how many votes are required for this project to pass tonight?
Simple majority.
Simple majority. Okay. Is there, there's no minimum?
We have a quorum, so it would have to be the majority of the quorum.
Majority of the quorum, and the quorum is how many?
Five, four.
Okay. I'm just curious what the threshold is, so you're barely at the threshold.
No, we are at the threshold, but it is a legitimate meeting. We have enough members here to conduct business.
Okay. And respectfully, would this be the appropriate time to ask about conflicts of interest involving board members?
With this application?
Yeah.
Certainly could ask.
Okay. So first I want to know, is New Brunswick tomorrow involved in this project?
No.
No.
Okay. Is Jones Lang LaSalle involved in this project?
No.
Would it be fair to say, though, that Rutgers University is involved in this project? Indeed, they've been identified as an equity investor in the project.
They've contributed $17 million to the theater.
Okay.
I voted on both of those.
I didn't know that they were. So for the record, I'm an adjunct at Rutgers. I'm not aware of that would create a conflict of interest according to Mr. Robinson with us, then, you know, I suspect we open that for the record.
Okay. I don't see that there's a conflict, there would be adjunct faculty members.
I am adjunct faculty.
Well, I will point out that on the local government ethics law financial disclosure statement, Mr. Castaneda lists on item A, says list the name and address of each source of income earned and on which he received in excess of $2,000 bucks, and he lists Rutgers University for himself. I don't see how that is not a conflict of interest, and I would respectfully encourage Mr. Castaneda to recuse himself from this matter.
I will do so.
Let me first ask, are you, first, Rutgers is not an applicant here this evening, so we don't have a direct conflict of interest. So the indirect conflict of interest would really be whether you're an interested party, whether it's directly or indirectly by this application. It seemed to me that you're, I don't want to minimize your position, but it's a tenured position, it's a part-time graduate position?
Correct.
And I would imagine that it probably has nothing at all to do with this application?
No. In fact, I don't think it could go under Kansas's account.
I see that it's not only not an indirect conflict, but I see no reason for your refusal this evening.
I'm not an attorney, but I'm learning a lot about the local government ethics law, and I know that this is the basics. If you're getting income from a source, and that source of income is an equity investor in a project that comes before a board, you shouldn't be participating or voting on the application. I understand it's an honest mistake. I think the right thing to do is recuse yourself, and I hope you'll do that.
I will abide by counsel, and if there's no need to recuse myself, according to counsel, I will abstain.
And just to be clear, the counsel is saying there's no need, so you're not going to...
This would be due to counsel advice, stated that there's no need on the line.
Okay. Well, that's respectfully not the right thing, and so I'm disappointed to see that happen tonight. I am quite frankly sick of all the conflicts of interest with this project. This is a project that has potential to be, as it was said, a transformative project, a major project that stands out among the rest of the state. But the attorney who's representing the applicant also represents the county, which is involved in the project, also represents the management company that's going to be involved in the project, also is involved, I believe, in the cultural center and the State Theater perhaps, and the local political organization, and it just...
I also live in New Brunswick.
So do I, and I respect your right to work in the private sector or the public sector, but respectfully, sir, you got to pick one. It's not fair to have this project suffer from all these conflicts, you know, the least of which so far is Mr. Luhon voting for it. But I also want to point out the New Brunswick Housing Authority. Their executive director was the only person to review it, and he appears to have a conflict of interest, a conflict of interest that I asked about in public, and they shut it down. They didn't want to talk about it. So this gives New Brunswick a bad reputation when we don't hold ourselves to the highest standard of ethics. And I just, I think this is a project that has potential as marked by conflicts of interest, and don't be a part of it, be part of the solution is what I would have to say. I do have a few other questions, but they're more general questions than I'll ask at the end of the meeting. That said, thank you for doing the do-over. Do the right thing tonight, Mr. Castaneda. Respectfully, recuse yourself. Don't commit an ethics violation tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions come to the public?
Any more discussion? I'd like to just maybe recap some of the reasons why we're back here this evening. The, one of the prerogatives of this board is until a final decision has been made, it still retains jurisdiction over an application and asks for the rehearing of an application in the interest of justice. In this case, there was a board member who indicated after the fact, after vote had been taken, that individual had not voted, I'm sorry, had not participated or commented on the application during the entire period the application was being presented, so no discussions were had that were on the record with this board member. But at the end of the hearing, when a vote was taken, we did vote in affirmative to approve the application. In the interest of justice, this board has decided to rehear the application. If the board is inclined to grant the application, it would need to, number one, incorporate the prior testimony as part of its consideration for a positive vote. Certainly, if it votes in the negative, it can also choose to state what it is, what the board members feel would be reasons for their vote to decline this application. If the board members have any questions at all about their role and any participation that they have, and specifically with regards to any conflicts of interest, board members can rely upon the advice of counsel. So in terms of there being an ethical violation, as counsel for the board and advising the board chair, that the mere fact that the individual is employed in an extremely part-time capacity as an adjunct professor in a different campus of Rutgers University, having nothing at all to do with this application, is too far removed from this application itself to create any sort of a perception of a conflict. So the advice, the advice of counsel would be that, and the board member can certainly rely on the advice of counsel, should rely on the advice of counsel, is that there is no conflict of interest, and based on the advice of counsel, if you choose to participate in this, which I would ask that you do participate, not based on conflict, however, if you choose to not participate, it's for some other reason, that's up to you. But in terms of a conflict, you may rely on the advice of counsel, that there is in fact no conflict with your participation.
Any other discussion, questions?
No, I see, I think that given the counsel's advice to us, that there's seemed to be nothing to do other than to make a motion to approve, approve this presentation.
At the conditions first?
Well, yes, it will be April 10th, including the April 10th testimonial, and so we'll be at that point right now. We are at that point.
None of the conditions have changed since the last one. Can I just refer to the conditions from April 10th, or should I read them all over again?
You can make reference to it. Chairman, could you just take a brief break so that I can refer to the board secretary?
Sure. Thank you.
the April 10th meeting. In addition to that, the one additional condition that would be at this meeting would be to incorporate the record from the April 10th meeting into the record of this year. So it's the same conditions that the board considers at the April 10th meeting, plus incorporating that record into this record.
Good. Motion to approve the minutes from the record of the April 10th meeting, calling the conditions that were stated in the April 10th meeting.
Yes.
John Texalino?
Yes.
Menewo Castaneda?
Yes.
David Zentner?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do we have any other matters of interest to the public?
Good evening once again. Charles Prattaville, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and there in New Brunswick today.
Chairman, just to... Who's the second on the...
Okay, I do want to start by thanking board member Chant, who's left the board, I understand, and thank her for her service. I have a few questions. Is Mr. Luhon still on the board?
I understand he will be stepping down from the board.
Is Ms. Newbauer still on the board?
Yes.
And Mr. Chaco still on the board?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess I do want to take this opportunity to remind the board members about the importance of the financial disclosure statements. I believe that Mr. Cretteri and Mr. Crum, you both own property in New Brunswick, and I don't think you disclose in the 2017 form, so that's something you want to...
We own residential property that we live in.
Yeah, that was, I put my address.
Our addresses are right there on those boards.
Indeed, they're not, on a publicly accessible version at least, and under item E, you're supposed to disclose a brief, the address and a brief description of all real property in the state of New Jersey in which an interest is held, so that includes your residence. If you happen to live in your residence, you have to disclose it under item E. So I'm just respectfully pointing out that we can all do better, and that's one area where you need to correct it.
That's one area we will try to do better. Thank you for your information, maybe about that.
Thank you, and I guess that's all I have. Again, wanted to say I was disappointed that the right thing is not done regarding conflict of interest. That's the same topic that this board has gone through before, whether or not Rutgers should disqualify you from doing your duty on a project where Rutgers is involved in the application. It's a bad precedent, and I'm sorry to see it continue.
Any other comments? Any questions to a chairman?
Well, good to be here.